First person is Holly Newman.
Name and address. My name is Holly Newman. My address is 19 Round Table Road. I have a daughter who is a junior at New Milford High School. And this is my son Joshua. He's in eighth grade. Joshua and I have discussed what I'm here to talk about. Joshua was a seventh grader at Scotticoke Middle School during the 21-22 school year. He was bullied verbally and physically the entire year. He was stabbed with a pencil, smacked in the head, pushed down the stairs, shoved into walls, and repeatedly told to kill himself by students in his class. Much of this was caught on video. What did the school do? What were the consequences? The boy who attacked him on the stairs was suspended for a few days. And let's not forget restorative conversation. That student came back more motivated and now aware of where cameras were. So he knew where and when to attack. At a school-sponsored dance in which the students had to register to attend, that student showed up unregistered with the intent to hurt my child. Several students reported this and told us there were texts to back up their claims. Thankfully, the PTO president did not let that student in. She reported the incident to the school. The school's response? They couldn't do anything because the dance was at the max and not on school property. When Joshua reported being repeatedly told to kill himself again, restorative conversation was the suggestion. Joshua developed chronic headaches, stomach aches, and he was afraid to go to school. Each time Josh reported the attack, verbal or physical, it was Joshua who had to adjust. It was suggested that Joshua have an adult escort him in the halls. He didn't want this to happen. So instead, it was advised that he leave class three minutes early so that he would be alone in the hallways and not available to the bullies. After it all became too much for him, he told a friend that he planned to kill himself. Thankfully, she told her guidance counselor, who called me, and we called 2-1-1. The 2-1-1 therapist shared that Joshua made it very clear he had begun having these thoughts as a result of being bullied at school. She told my husband and I, if it were her son, she'd remove him from SMS immediately. We brought him home. We gave him a few days to adjust while we adjusted his class schedules and hopefully tried to separate him from the students that were bullying him. Once he returned, he was punched in the head, unprovoked, while walking down the hall. This, too, was caught on video. That student received a whole day suspension and, of course, restorative conversation. In November, we pulled Josh from school on a medical leave of absence due to his declining mental health. Josh returned in January with yet another schedule adjustment that allowed him to leave school at 12:30. To make it very clear, the consistent solution to my son being bullied at school was to alter his schedule at the expense of his education. This continued for the rest of the year, even with the shortened day Joshua was bullied physically and verbally daily. Joshua is currently attending a different school at my expense. Bullying is simply not tolerated in that school. The students know it's not tolerated. The school emphasizes community, clear expectations, and consequences are given. Scotticoke Middle School and New Milford Schools failed Joshua. And as you will hear, it's currently failing its students today. This district needs to do better. Our children's lives depend on it.
Thank you, Holly and Josh. Tracy Ruscille.
Hi, Tracy Ruscille, R-U-S-C-I-L, 2 Rustic Hill Lane. Hi, everyone. I'm Tracy Ruscille. I have three kids in the New Milford School District, a daughter that's a freshman, and twin seventh graders at Scotticoke. My sons AJ and Garrett are autistic, and they are unable to self-report bullying. In May of last year, a kid on the bus took a picture of one of my sons with his pants down. Another kid on the bus reported it to his parents, and in turn, they reported it to the school. The school did not report it to me. I was not informed of the incident until November, six months later. That is because another incident occurred. And I think maybe it was the next incident because I don't know how many incidents there are because my kids are unable to tell me. So in November, the following messages were airdropped by a student into the phones of other students on the bus. "You're more autistic and ugly-looking than AJ, even the bus driver. You're dirty as shit." "Blank" is an N-word, and so is "blank," and AJ and Garrett, and the bus driver. "Blank" is a monkey. Those are just some of the airdrops. If you're not sure what an airdrop is, I'll tell you later because I don't want to take up time explaining it, but it pops up on your phone. So I learned about this incident from my daughter, who received a screenshot of it, of the horrible things said about her brothers from one of her friends. I did not learn about it from the school. When it happened, I was contacted by the parent who had originally reported the incident of my son being photographed. So she thought the school had contacted me about it and did not say anything to me, but they hadn't. Hearing it from her was when I learned about it, six months after it happened. At the time, I was worried, maybe he was sexually assaulted. The only thing I knew was that his pants were down and someone took a photo. I didn't know how the pants got down, if someone had touched him, or if the photos were shared. The school denied being notified. And then, when I supplied them with written proof of their acknowledgement, they told me the person handling it was no longer with New Milford. And to this day, there's been no resolution, no apology, no acceptance of guilt in the failure to protect my child. Holly's son Josh was able to tell you about what happened to him. He was able to tell her about it and about how he was feeling. But my one son is almost nonverbal. He cannot tell me if he's being abused by fellow students. And the other son can't find the words to explain it all. And neither can voice how it hurts their hearts to be treated this way. They can't tell me. I filed a police report. The bully was questioned by the police, and he denied doing it, so I could not press charges. Are there pictures of my son in his underwear on a website somewhere? I have no idea. Can you imagine what it's like to send your children to school knowing that something like this happened and they were not protected by the school? I have no way of knowing if other things have happened. My kids can't tell me. They were moved from their bus and placed in a van, as if they were guilty. Unfortunately, I need to accept the segregation of my special-needs children for the sake of their safety. It's the only way I know that they're going to be safe, is if they're separated. And it just doesn't seem fair. Is this our New Milford? Is this who we want to be? This is an ongoing problem. It may be one of the first times it's discussed here, but I know, the mayor knows, the police know, the youth agency knows. Everyone knows there's a problem, especially at Scotticoke. And I don't feel like anything's being done to fix it. Thank you.
Beth Bascher.
My name is Beth Bascher, and I live at 1 Brushy Hill. When is enough enough? When is it enough when you see your kids coming off the bus without a smile? When is it enough when you hear the stories repeatedly from one specific class with specific children disrupting learning? Why do the students feel it's okay to rummage through other kids' school bags and think it's okay? Is learning being done or is it about survival at this point? Why is this being allowed? When is it enough when your kids have to be held up by a parent because they are afraid of being killed in the hallway? Or being jumped in the hall by kids their age? And they want to kill you, and they actually said, "I want to kill you." Throwing food, throwing objects that could hurt, could bleed. When is it enough when your kids don't want to walk into school because of fear of their peers? What about their safety? "You're a fat, ugly..." fill in the word. "You're so fat, why are you breathing?" Are just some of the comments I hear from my kids when they tell me about their day. When is enough enough? Kids are at a sensitive age with body images, self-esteem issues, confidence, finding out who they are and trying to leave a footprint on this earth. They won't be able to do this if this continues. This is a time to support each other and not hurt each other. Respect is not practiced in this school, especially when it comes to their teachers and peers. It's disgusting. I ask again, when is enough enough? This whole year, I have been hearing stories of bullying, harassment, and so on, wiping tears, holding my daughters tighter and longer, making them know they feel they are loved and safe. I'll ask you this. Is the school safe when your sons, daughters, or the children you have guardianship have all this aforementioned? Nope. What can be done? What needs to be done? Computers have taken over learning, which is a shame. As a former special ed and mainstream teacher during the pandemic, I did the most I could without the screen. Why can't we limit computers now? What's wrong with paper and pencil? It takes a village to raise children, and it takes partnerships to make it all happen. Administration needs to be stronger, and parents should work with them to achieve a safe goal. Consequences need to be implemented and followed through more tightly. I understand they are limited on what can be done, but obviously, what's been happening is not working to make Scotticoke Middle School a better school, nor the environment. I didn't have any issues with New Milford until this year, and it's disgusting. I have been on the phone with administration almost two to three times a week reporting something that happened to my children directly. I am sick of it. This is a school, a place for learning, and instead, I feel like a place to learn how to survive. Just a few weeks ago, a young girl committed suicide in New Jersey because of bullying, something that is coming, the new norm, just like lockdown, just like staying-in-place practices. When is enough enough? The young girl who was tormented in her school from peers recorded her physical fight on social media. She was 15 years of age, which isn't that much older than the student of Scotticoke Middle School. A parent of New Milford removed her child because of bullying from Sarah Noble Intermediate School. What needs to happen before suicide or even more kids are pulled out? Mental health. Highly motivated and skilled mental health advocates need to be readily available to these children. The school needs to provide this service to those who need it. With not providing something like this could promote another suicide. And I ask again, when is enough enough? Thank you.
Cameron.
I'm Cameron Bascher. I live at 1 Brushy Hill Lane. Every day, people have thoughts about committing suicide because of bullying. Some kids decide they have finally had enough and end their lives. Those could be kids at our school if we continue the way we have been going. We need to fix this problem found in so many schools. There are so many kids at our school being tormented because of race, sexuality, mental disorders, or skin color. And my friends and I have been called names so awful I can't repeat them. But the worst part is that we can't fight back because we get in trouble. There's only so much that we can take before we break. We report it to teacher after teacher, and nothing gets done. It's not that they don't try to do anything. It's just the fact that the kids just end up behaving worse after. They get a talking to and go right back to doing the same thing over and over, even worse. I have grown so used to being teased and treated awfully that it can no longer be okay, not that it ever should have been. There have been days where I almost don't want to get out of bed because I do not feel safe. Mental abuse is just as bad as physical abuse because it leaves scars that never heal. Just because some kids don't show it doesn't mean that they aren't hurting inside. So I ask you, when will enough be just that, enough? I don't think we can continue on like this, and I don't think you do either. We can break, and when we do, we will be disciplined because we disrupted the class, or misbehaved, or we were too loud. How is that fair? The other kids that are actually doing it, they're shouting profanities across the room. Please fix this so that nobody at Scotticoke Middle School has to end their life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin Haynes.
Hi, my name is Erin Haynes. I live at 19 Greenview Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am both a parent of a fourth grader at Sarah Noble, Isaiah, and I'm also the music teacher at Hill and Plain School. Tonight, I'm speaking primarily as a parent. However, as a teacher, I am always looking for ways to promote respect, acceptance, kindness, and inclusion among our students. I am here in support of these parents speaking out against bullying. I think their stories speak louder than anything else I could say, but I'm also here because my son is autistic with intellectual disabilities. And although we are fortunate not to have to deal with bullying yet, as far as I know, it's something I worry about more and more as he approaches middle school. I hear about our neighbors, some of his very best friends, being bullied, and it's absolutely unacceptable. I stand in support of these boys and also for my son's future. My son has a very loving heart. He feels like everyone is his friend, but he has minimal verbal communication. I wouldn't change anything about him, but he would be a very easy target for a bully. And he would not be able to report it to us because he just doesn't have the speech and language to do that. I recently received an email that there have been inappropriate text message exchanges between students here at Sarah Noble. When I'm on the bus getting him on and off, I hear bus drivers sternly telling students to put their phones away because they're not allowed to have their phones out on the bus, but it's still happening. I hear that much of the bullying that occurs, like we heard tonight, happens through text, airdrop, social media, phones, et cetera. My question is, what are we going to do about this? What kind of boundaries can we set around this that would make a difference? These students have tools in their hands that they are clearly not developmentally ready to handle responsibly. And, you know, I guess I think it's not entirely their fault that they've been given these tools and not... There's no accountability for how they're being used. And I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think we need to figure that out. I'm also wondering, what are we explicitly teaching students about acceptance and inclusion, especially in the older grades, but even in the primary schools where I teach? Are there things that we could do? Is there more that we could do to help young people understand the importance of kindness and respect and acceptance? And, you know, I think the mental health support. You know, things are happening with that. I'm very supportive of that. I'm very grateful for that. But these are questions that really, really need to be answered. I have lots of questions and not a lot of answers. But I think we have to ask the questions and find answers to them if we are going to create a safe learning environment for all of our students. And I think that's priority number one, and I thank you for your time.
Is that it? Megan, do you want to speak?
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I feel I need to. So Megan Bird, 2 Carlson Road. I was the PTO president at Scotticoke Middle School last year and the year before. I personally dealt with the situations at the dances. The same student who was not admitted in order to protect Holly's son did pre-register, did come to a dance last year, and a physical altercation broke out at the dance, at the very end of the dance. And he bolted and went home. His father was outside waiting for him already. But we did fill out a police report for it. It is a serious situation. And I just wanted to speak to the fact that it impacts not just those who are directly bullied. My children spent their... Well, my son spent sixth grade at home remote because he was feeling anxiety due to COVID. And we went back in seventh grade. And by the end of the year in seventh grade, was so disgusted and literally in tears sometimes in the car ride home watching what was happening to his friends and feeling powerless to do anything about it, that he decided he was going to do something about it. He was going to start a student-led group, and he did his best to try and do that. It was at the very end of the year, so nothing got off the ground last year. But we were invited, as were other parents and students, to participate in the school climate committee, which I'm very thankful for. And we've been to every meeting since we were invited last spring. We've missed one. And this year, other students and a few other parents have started attending as well, but it's not a lot. And honestly, the school climate committee is not addressing the bullying problem. They have just started a student-led group. I think it's Student Led Club or For Change or something like that. Student Leaders for Change, I think, is what they're calling it. But again, it shouldn't be up to the students to try and change their school. I mean, yes, they have a responsibility to participate in that change, absolutely, but it should be coming from above. I do think the new administration at the school this year is doing what they can, but the problem is severe, and it has been severe for many years. And I think it's gotten worse after COVID. I think a lot of students just don't know how to interact with anybody anymore after being at home for a couple of years and separated from the social situation. So they definitely need a little more help. And I felt I needed to say that. If anybody wants to talk to me about what I personally saw as PTO president, I'm happy to share that information. You know, as Holly said, I did report it to the school and the district when it happened so they were aware. But I know for a fact that the student is still repeat offending this year. So... And it's a shame that he's not getting the help that he needs because he clearly needs some help too. So, and that's it for public comment.
Does anyone else in public like to speak at this time?
Absolutely. If you just want to go around to the podium, sure, of course.
Sarah Delucia. Sorry, do you guys want to go first? Oh, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Bascher. I live at 1 Brushy Hill. Okay. So, what I've honestly experienced about bullying is that, I mean, honestly, it's always in this one class. But like, I've always come home saying, really like, really like negative... Like, I've said nothing positive about that classroom, except for one thing, maybe. But that's probably it. But one of my worst experiences in that classroom is that I was in the classroom and we were just like... It was just a normal day. But these people decided not to be so nice. And they just decided to just put hand sanitizer all over my clothes and all over my arms and stuff. And so I... I just couldn't stand that classroom, so I had to go out of the classroom. I was both... Yeah, yeah, I was trying to look like the teacher or something. But they were all busy, of course. But yeah. I had nothing else. That's all.
Hi, I'm Olivia Vanek. I live on 28 Maury Road. And... Uh, Vanek, V-A-N-E-K. And I just wanted to say, there's been a lot of things happening at school lately, and I really think we should, like, end this. So I really hope we can do all we can and help these kids because I don't think anyone deserves to be treated like this. And especially like my friends and everyone in the school. So, yeah.
Sarah Delucia, 12 Palomino Drive. I wasn't really planning to speak, but I graduated in 2014, and my experience with bullying was awful. Like, I had the police involved. I had a projector screen put up of how ugly I was, all these photos of me. It was awful. I had extreme eating disorders. I had to leave school at 10 o'clock all throughout high school. And I came to that school my sophomore year, so I was new. I was an easy target. And throughout like my entire high school experience, I was just sent to the guidance office. That was all that was done. If there were students in there, I just had to sit there. I was consistently yelled at by my principal. I don't think he's there anymore, but I was consistently yelled at by my principal that I wasn't in class enough, that I was always skipping school. And it just took my mom battling with the school system to like keep me out of school because of how severely bullied I was. I had years, still do, of trauma that I'm still dealing with. And I'm 26 now. And I just feel as though, hearing all of this tonight, it's crazy to me that it's still like this. I thought when I left, I was like, hopefully they'll do something about it, you know? And just hearing this tonight, I like had to say something because I dealt with that for three years. It was awful, and I'm heartbroken hearing this now, and especially in eighth grade. You know what I mean? And I just really hope you guys take into consideration everything that everyone's saying, my experience that happened years ago, and just know that this issue is big. It's huge. And like, that's it. I just really hope you guys understand the depth of it. Thank you.
Okay, my name's a long one. It's Laura Grassler Lockwood Lake. I come from a different point of view. I have... Oh, sorry, 15 Sundance Road, New Milford. Come from a different point of view. I have a sixth grader at Scotticoke right now. He is not currently being bullied. He's a white kniter. Every day, he comes home, we get a phone call, we get a story from him where he stood in the middle. I don't know if you noticed the six-foot blonde kid. That's my 12-year-old baby. He gets in the middle of these and tries to stop it. Then he misses class. We get a call that he missed assignments, that he got a little rough, which possible. My children are not angels. I have four other children who are adults now. They attended New Fairfield Schools, middle school and high school, and Sherman Middle School and high school. We didn't have these problems at those schools. Granted, they're a bit older. They're 26, 27, and 30. But we didn't have these problems. The administration, the teachers, the vice principals were involved with the parents, with the bullying. There were repercussions. Granted, as parents, of course, we were not told of punishments or repercussions, but something was done to stop kids from picking on other kids. something was done to stop kids from picking on other kids. Something was done. We didn't have these stories every day. I don't believe this is strictly a COVID issue, because Scotty was bullied in Northville. The principal handled it, and it was stopped, and it was by a student who is currently bullying at Scotticoke right now. Currently, and continues. So, I would like to see, as a seasoned parent, some kind of information to the parents, some procedures or protocols. I spent a week talking to some friends of mine who are teachers in the school system, and digging through paperwork to find out that the school board, actually, or the district, I should say, actually has a hidden, like buried form where you can anonymously report bullying. None of the other parents I know knew that was there. Nothing has ever been sent to us that I have ever seen telling us what we can do about this. And it's known that it happens. So, can't we work in partnership to help our children work together? Like I said, the other two school systems I have put children through didn't have these issues like I'm seeing at Scotticoke, and I'm hearing about at Scotticoke. And that's it.
Good evening. Russell Newman, 19 Roundtable. You heard from my wife and saw my son, and heard about some of the horrific activities that happened at Scotticoke Medical School. Thank you for mentioning the hidden form. When we asked for that form to report the bullying to go to the state, we told that, or we were told that it didn't exist. We were told that there was no such form available. Just a little more history on what happened to Joshua. Right before we fully pulled him from the school, he was in the hallway with a principal, with a guidance counselor, with his mother. He saw a bully come across the hall. He said, "Quick, come into this empty room." He literally grabbed administrators and his mom to pull them out of the hallway, because he was so terrified. One of the times that my wife did come into the school, he was punched as he was walking down the hallway to her. You know, there has been a lot of administration changes. I know that several administrators have left Scotticoke, some new ones have come in, some new thoughts and ideas. Perhaps some electronic monitoring. You know, I know that some school districts offer anything within the IP address, whether it's a school-based Chromebook, or a personal device can be monitored. Catchwords, major activities. That's something that absolutely should be in place. You know, certainly, as photos of children are being taken inappropriately, these are things that can be flagged and caught. Perhaps, I know the SROs do a lot of hard work with these kids, trying to straighten out the courses of a few of these kids. You know, perhaps not just guidance, maybe, I don't know what other further steps they can take, but I don't think that the children that are being tortured, and beaten, and harassed should be the ones affected by the leadership. I think the children causing the damage need to be separated, need to be taken out. I'm going to step away now. Thank you.
Thank you.